Welcome to our regular scheduled City Council meeting for October. If you could all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes. Councilor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boule.
I am here.
Councilor Champlin.
I am also here.
Councilor Fennessey.
Present.
Councilor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Councilor Keach.
He's, yeah.
MIA.
Councilor Kennison.
Here.
Councilor Kretovic.
Here.
Councilor Mattson.
She's excused.
Councilor McNamara.
Here.
Councilor Nye.
Present.
Councilor Pierce.
Here.
Councilor Rice Hawkins.
Here.
Councilor Todd.
Here.
And Councilor Warner.
Here.
Wonderful to see everyone. We do have several sets of minutes before us. If you don't mind, we could take both the September 13th as well as the September 20th minutes at the same time. We can do it in one motion if that's okay.
Approval.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of September 13th, September 20th. Is there any changes or suggestions to either one of them? Seeing none, raise the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any ayes have it. Okay. Now comes the time which I enjoy the most, to recognize people who have served with the city so faithfully and loyally, and to recognize their use of service. So, we have what appears to be Team Tim here with us tonight. Is that fair? All right. So, typically what we do is have you come up here and stand in the circle, but since there are so many of you, I'm gonna go to you. And what we're gonna do is, I'll come down and I'll read the proclamation. Whoever wants to accept it, and if you could introduce yourselves when we do, that'd be great, and I would love to do a photo with everybody in the plaque, if that's okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I didn't get a Team Tim shirt. What happened?
We'll take care of that.
So, this is Resolution 9405, Resolution to recognition of the services of maintenance technician Timothy Fontaine. Whereas maintenance technician Timothy Fontaine has been a faithful and loyal employee of the city of Concord for over 37 years, beginning his career in 1982 as a maintenance aide working in the city's purchasing department. Whereas Tim Fontaine joined the public property staff in 1991, obtained his commercial driver's license, and was promoted to senior maintenance aide. Whereas in 1996, Tim Fontaine was given responsibility for the city's seven swimming pools, completed his certified pool operator credentials, and was promoted to a maintenance technician where he remained in the public properties division, serving his capacity until his retirement on June 30th, 2019. Whereas Tim Fontaine's dependently attended to the maintenance and the care of the city property, his dedication and loyalty to the city of Concord as citizens is without question. Whereas Tim Fontaine's determination, dedication, and quiet confidence have time and time again benefited the city of Concord and the city general services department, whether it was through his tireless snow removal efforts at the Concord Airport, attention to the maintenance and repair of the city's numerous mechanical systems, training and mentoring of his fellow coworkers, or through his leadership as a senior member of the city's hardworking technical staff. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Concord, and hereby accord our sincere appreciation for the many years of service from maintenance technician Timothy W. Fontaine to the city of Concord. Be it further resolved that we hereby acknowledge the service and presence of maintenance technician Timothy Fontaine will truly be missed by the city council, the city administration, Concord General Services Department, and the entire Concord community. We extend our best wishes and gratitude to his family, and one who will see well here today. Short retirement, his hard fought battle with aggressive disease, and not a time like this. Signed, October 12th, 2021.
I can't thank you enough. I'm so glad you did this, and I want to thank you for calling his service and his dedication to the city of Concord. Come on up here. Everybody, the council is back here? I want it. I do weddings, too. Family here?
Stand the ball.
Gotta scoot this way a little bit. I can only promise you one thing. If you can't see the camera, you can't see your right arm. All right, where's?
White, white, white.
So, I was at a wedding in New York a month ago.
It's nice.
Yeah. All right, how old are you? Kishfield, no, Hillfish, New York. Oh, yeah. It just, and West Point. Yeah, I know. Yeah, you just call ahead. So, wedding on Thursday.
I know, I'm one of those.
Well, we're all getting together. I just really wanted to also thank General Services for helping put this together. It's really important we recognize folks and thank you all for helping out with this. Okay. Mr. Manager, you have an introduction of our new zoning administrator.
Do you see him? I do not see him in the audience right now. I think he's working on a wayward shed. Carlos has assigned him to, no, he's not here right now. So, we'll try to bring him forward at the next meeting.
Tell him his first shot at glory here.
He's gone.
It's all downhill from here. Here we go. All right. We do have a consent agenda before us tonight. By the way, please give him our best and please invite him back anytime he wishes. We do have a consent agenda with us before us this evening. It's my understanding that no one has removed any items from the consent agenda. Is that correct? Great. Can we get a motion? Motion. Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any ayes have it. Okay. That takes us to our public hearings this evening. For the record, let us show at 7:11. We are moving. How's that? Madam Clerk, item 28A, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Bus and Taxicab Stands.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Honorable members of the council, our request to consolidate two Concord area transit bus stops was submitted to the Public Transportation Subcommittee of the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee to reduce the potential for traffic conflicts. Based on the information provided, engineering staff in concert with the committees and CAT management, Concord area transit management investigated alternative locations in the recommended solution is to consolidate two existing bus stops at a new location just south of the signal at North Main Street and Washington Street. There is an existing 11-foot shoulder for the bus to pull off in an existing no parking zone, making it more attractive location than the existing bus stop, which requires the bus to travel, to stop in the travelway. It also provides more distance for the driver to negotiate shifting over into the leftmost lane. Glad to answer any questions.
If there's any questions. Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 28B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Section 18-1-71, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours and Months in Designated Places, Jackson Street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, as you recall, the parking committee initiated a comprehensive review of narrow streets located in wards 4, 5, and 6. The study areas predominantly focus on the neighborhoods located to the southwest and north of the downtown central business district. In February of 2021, Nathan Parker, a Jackson Street resident, contacted city administration with concerns about on-street parking during the winter months for the portion of Jackson Street located between Franklin and Highland. Upon review, staff determined that ordinance number 3064, which was adopted in 2020 for the purpose of implementing the winter parking bans for certain streets, inadvertently omitted the parking committee's recommendation to establish a winter parking ban on this segment of Jackson Street. On April 26, 2021, the parking committee reviewed the issue and voted unanimously to recommend a city council adopt the attached ordinance, which you have in front of you, establishing a winter parking ban on Jackson Street to include the section between Franklin and Highland Streets. The ban will be effective January 1 through March 15 annually.
Glad to answer any questions. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you could read item 28C, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Article 18-1 Stopping Standing and Parking, Parking Prohibited at All Times in Designated Places, Whitney Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Interchange development, AKA Laurie and David Rossio, who are sitting in the audience, have requested the city prohibit stopping, standing, and parking along the frontage of the Rossio-controlled properties due to activities associated with adjacent facilities. This section of Whitney Road is approximately 38 feet wide, and the redevelopment plans, as you know, that are going on up there, will limit the areas that will have sufficient width for on-street parking. In addition, certain inappropriate activities associated with truck traffic is driving this request. On June 28, 2021, the parking committee reviewed this request and voted unanimously to recommend that the city council adopt the ordinance establishing a no-stopping, standing, and parking ordinance on both sides of Whitney Road between Route 4 and the Wheeler Braden property. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? Are you sure?
If there's anyone for any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the Rossios? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 28D, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $20,000 for the addition of a fiscal Tech II position at the Beaver Meadow Golf Course, funding for which shall be provided from revenues for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the business of Beaver Meadow Golf Course has steadily increased, and while some leveling is likely to occur, it's become necessary to request the addition of some technical administrative staffing to process the daily workload. Some of the responsibilities include reconciliation of previous day's cash receipts, assist with the tournament operations, weekly events, pre-outing agreements, post-tournament billing, promotion, and preparation of follow-up. This position will assist the director with other record-keeping, work schedules, coordination of golf activities with the food and beverage concierge. Additionally, they will help with the special orders receiving, point-of-sale pricing, display of merchandise, more than you ever wanted to know. And it is anticipated this position will work approximately 20 hours per week, will free up the director of operations to focus energy on the current and new customer development, outings, leagues, course conditions, and all other aspects of course operations. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Any question for the manager? Okay. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 28E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $21,527 for police department roadway safety initiatives and accepting the sum of $21,527 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency.
Mr. Manager?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the police department desires to continue in its efforts to making the city's roadways as safe as possible. An important aspect of this is to conduct roadway safety and enhance enforcement initiatives. Funding provided by this grant will significantly augment the department's efforts to keep roadways in a safe condition for all to use. These grant funds funded patrols will be conducted throughout the year until the grant period ends September 30, 2022. It is recommended the city council authorize that the police department to accept and appropriate $21,527 in grant funding from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency designated for police department roadway safety initiatives. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any question for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 28F, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $32,000 for the general operations and maintenance of the Concord Municipal Airport and accepting the sum of $32,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funding as administered by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the airport has been notified that is eligible for an airport rescue allocation of $32,000 from this program for operations and maintenance. There is no match requirement for this grant. We recommend that you accept this grant.
Any questions? Counselor Chablin?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Manager, are there any specific maintenance or operations projects that we're going to use this for?
As you know, Mr. Baye oversees the airport. He'll be driving this.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Evening, Your Honor. Members of the council. At this point, it would be the general maintenance that we contemplate in every year's budget. There's not a specific project that's associated with these dollars.
So, this would, follow-up, Your Honor? So, this would essentially reduce the amount of taxpayer dollars.
Yes, exactly.
City property taxpayer dollars. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any questions? While Mr. Baye is here. Good to see you. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that one. And madam clerk, item 28G, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $180,000 to include $20,000 to the inspection fund and $160,000 to the golf fund for fiscal year 2021, retroactive to June 30, 2021, to be funded from excess revenues in the golf fund and fund balance in the inspection fund.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, for fiscal year 21, the preliminary results for the golf fund are a gain of $241,000, including expenses that exceeded budget by $153,200. The supplemental requested amount, as the city clerk mentioned, is $160,000, and this amount is supported by excess golf fund revenues. Be glad to get into specifics if you wish. On that, the inspection fund for fiscal year 21, the preliminary results for this fund report are an over expenditure of $19,300 due to wages and benefits greater than budget, and this request is to use $20,000 available from the inspection fund balance. So, all these funds for both of these items come from the funds, not from the general taxpayer.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And madam clerk, I do believe it's the last one. Item 28H, please.
It is a resolution establishing Birch Street as an emergency lane under RSA 231-59A.
Mr. Manager?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Birch Street is a Class 6 public highway, is a gravel road that connects Clinton Street to Ironworks Road. There's a 30-inch drain under Birch Street approximately 2,585 feet long, serving Concord Meadows that is publicly maintained by the city. There is also a 15-inch cross culvert that passes under Birch Street as a southerly end near Ironworks Road. General Services does not regularly maintain or repair Birch Street on a more than seasonal basis, and the road has not been maintained in a suitable condition for year-round travel over the last several years. Birch Street was last graded in May 2019. General Services does not provide any winter maintenance to Birch Street. From a practical standpoint, the street serves as a vehicular access for leased community garden plots on a budding land owned by the state of New Hampshire. General Services occasionally receives requests for grading of Birch Street. In order for General Services to perform such summer maintenance on Birch Street, the road needs to be cleared as an emergency lane under RSA 231, colon, 59, dash, A. General Services does not intend to maintain or plow Birch Street in the winter. They've worked with, and we've worked with the city council on this, and to make sure this meets the needs of that area of the community, and we believe that it does. Glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Fennessey?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, what are the expected additional costs associated with upgrading this, I guess, to an emergency lane?
Mr. Chesley, go for it.
Good evening and welcome, Mr. Chesley.
Good evening. For the most part, I would imagine it would be in the vicinity, only material costs for the most part would be the out-of-pocket expense, and that would probably be less than $1,000.
So, what are the, I apologize, what are the expenses for, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out?
I'm sorry?
What are you spending money on?
Oh, it'd be gravel, some materials to bring the road up to grade if there were some depressions and that type of stuff, potholes to fill potholes that are on the road.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase, and madam clerk, if you could read item 29, please.
So, it's a public hearing action on a public hearing, city council held, excuse me, on September 20, 2021, and it was a public hearing to consider whether it would grant a cable television franchise to provide cable services for the franchise applicant Atlantic Broadband to install, construct, and operate a cable television system in Concord.
Thank you very much. So, is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion made and approved to approve this. Motion made and seconded. So, this would be to accept the report and authorize the manager to enter into negotiations. Period. Right? So, we're all clear on that? Anyone wishing to speak? We'll go with Counselor Kennison and Counselor Champlin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to comment, I have contacted several people in regards to Atlantic Broadband, and I've received nothing but very poor performance by Atlantic Broadband, very poor service, fluctuating bills in the amounts from, you know, like $120 to over $200 with no explanation. Telephone service for a couple of people, they've had a problem, ongoing problem with their phone service, phone cutting out. When service providers have come to their home to try to rectify some of the things, many did not speak English well enough so that the person could communicate with them about what the problem was. And in one instance, they moved, they told a customer, "Your phone isn't working well because it's not close enough to the modem," which is very bizarre, and drilled a hole in the wall and moved her phone without her permission. And just, I've heard nothing good about broadband. I just wanted to bring that up at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Chablin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank Atlantic Broadband for providing a fairly detailed response to my question about how they fulfilled the seven points that come under the purview of this body. I thought that their information was very enlightening and helpful to me in making a decision. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor, Mayor Protam Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to bring up that at the last council, at the hearing for Atlantic Broadband, we did ask for them to forward us the PowerPoint, and did we receive that? We did. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Counselors, Zanarosakis.
Thank you. I just was going to add that I've heard from several constituents on this, and they would like us to move forward with it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, takes us to item 30, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18, Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Bus and Taxi Cap Stance.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 31, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18, Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours and Months in Designated Places for Jackson Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? We have Counselor Credit and Counselor Fancy.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Was there a reason we left December out? It does snow in December still, yes?
I think this, I'm going to yield to other people in the parking committee, but if I remember correctly, this coincides with all the other ones we've done.
Okay.
Yes, Your Honor, that's correct.
Okay.
I think December's out because...
Of the holidays.
Because of the holiday, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Fancy.
I just want to thank Mr. Parker for bringing this to our attention and keeping us all on our toes when we screw up sometimes. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 32, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18, Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited at All Times and Designated Places, Whitney Road.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, item 33, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $20,000 for the addition of a fiscal tech two position at the Beaver Meadow Golf Course, funding for which shall be provided from anticipated excess revenues for fiscal year 2022.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Motion is adopted by the necessary two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk, item 34, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $21,527 for Police Department roadway safety initiatives and accepting the sum of $21,527 in grant funds from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 35, please.
Resolution appropriating the sum of $32,000 for the general operations and maintenance of the Concord Municipal Airport and accepting the sum of $32,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funding as administered by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 36, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of $180,000 to include $20,000 to the inspection fund and $160,000 to the golf fund for fiscal year 2021, retroactive to June 30th, 2021, to be funded from excess revenues in the golf fund and fund balance in the inspection fund.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Counselor Credit.
Thanks, Your Honor. It's been a great year for golf. It's been a second great year for golf. And already, we are seeing that next year is going to be a great year for golf. This, along with our fiscal tax, are really smart moves for the golf course so that we can free up our golf directors' time so that they can pay attention to customer service because the year after that is going to be a phenomenal year for golf.
Not just golf, golf at Beaver Meadow.
And ski season, which is also coming down the pipe.
Counselor Credit, does this mean you're retiring so you can play golf all the time?
I wish. Will you talk to my husband, please? Thank you.
Wow, that got out of hand.
Maintain order. You've got the gavel.
Okay, so, do we have a motion? I forgot.
Yes, I motioned and it was seconded.
We're ready for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item 37, please.
A resolution establishing Birch Street as an emergency lane under RSA 23159A.
Move approval. Move approval.
Motion made and seconded to approve this item. So, Mr. Manager, I just want to be clear. So... So this will be graded so that during the summer, there'll be safer access?
Essentially for people to get to the community gardens. Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. That finishes our public hearing this evening, and we are doing well, folks. Tonight, we have one report, item 38, which is an update presentation by our Human Services Director, Karen NS. Williams. I'm Director. If you wouldn't mind joining us?
Hello.
Welcome. Good to see you, as always.
Same here. Good evening, everyone.
I appreciate you coming tonight to kind of give us a quick update. We're several months into the new fiscal year. But probably more importantly, we are about to see the leaves come off the trees. And when that happens, there's a whole lot more phone calls that start being generated our way. I was wondering if you might be able to give us kind of update of where your department is and what you're seeing and all the things that I didn't even think about.
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. So for our department right now, what we're looking at is utility shut-offs because right now, it's that time of season. What the utility companies really try to do is really get all the back arrears paid off before the winter moratorium starts, which is November 15th. So that's really what the focus that we've been seeing. Even with all of the rental assistance that's been in the state, we have not seen as many rental assistance cases as we originally had planned or thought of. We are actually under budget this year. And we were actually also last year, but we are actually a little bit underspent, even more this year, which is a little bit more surprising. The cases that we have been seeing, people, actually, some individuals are not behind on the rent. Others, we've seen that they are substantially behind. We've had some cases that they have arrears of $8,000, $6,000 in arrears. So we've worked really closely with the cap in order for us to try to get some of that back rental assistance paid off. We sometimes have assisted our clients with submitting that application because we do know that there's a delay in those applications. To process the applications right now is four to eight weeks. So you can imagine, some of our clients are very nervous about the eviction. So we try to work also with their landlords. Landlords that we've worked with have been really kind and really understanding and really trying to get their money paid off for that back rent. So that's what we've been seeing in general right now.
Just, so the 48 weeks is not the city. Those are applications...
No, 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 no. It's for the applications for them. Yeah, we're seeing clients, and we can see them right away and process our applications. Now, it's really more the emergency rental assistance program. That's where the delay is at.
And that's administered by?
CAP, Community Action Program. So that's where the arrears at, not at our office. Our office, we can do that right away. That's not a problem. Any questions?
Counselor Sockets.
Thank you. On the rental assistance, for the portion that's underspent, do you think that's because of the increased assistance from the federal level? Or is it because people are having a hard time actually using those vouchers because of the lack of affordable housing?
I think it's a little bit of everything. I mean, we've had clients have actually had their letter that they have a subsidy and they can't find an apartment. So that's been part of the issue that we've also been able to see in our office, which is unfortunate, but that's the reality of it.
Anyone else? Anything else you'd like to share that might help us?
You know me. No.
Don't ask, don't tell, Your Honor. You, I'm sorry, go ahead. Counselor Chieftain.
Yes.
I thought you were about to close. That's why, only reason I spoke up. Do you feel, Ms. NS. Williams, that, do people know that you're there? I mean, I often wonder whether people who are in distress, who are at hazard of losing their apartment, whether they know to come to City Human Services?
I think that they do. I mean, we work with a lot of organizations in our community. We've been around, city welfare is now new. So a lot of our folks do know. I think that when we saw COVID, a lot of people were unaware of us. But we are very well connected to the community, and people do know about us. But people are always also moving into our community. But they find us when it's actually necessary, they find us, whether it's referral from a CAP, Homeless Resource Center, or other organizations that's in the community. So I do believe that we are very well-known in our community for that way people can come and get our rental assistance. But same as CAPs, people still don't know that there are some emergency rental assistance programs that are still available. But that we are in the community, yes, I do believe that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Counselor Keach.
I'm fine, thank you. But thank you, Karen. You do a great job.
Thank you.
You enjoy a great reputation in the community.
Appreciate that. Well deserved.
I have a connection to the Friendly Kitchen, and your name is brought up often, so, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, yes.
Counselor Fancy.
Thank you. It sounds like, based on your report, that at least so far, we haven't seen a huge spike in evictions or at least service requests to you as a result of evictions. Are you anticipating that we're going to see a spike in the spring? Or, you know, to the extent you can forecast what's up ahead?
It's really difficult to be able to project that. I think that where the money now has been expanded, so one of the... So ERAP has been divided into two plans. So the first one has been extended at least until next year, and the other one to 2025. So if you imagine, that's going to be a long time. With the second ERAP that started actually on October 1st, it's a little bit better because now there is less restrictions on this program. But it's really, I can't predict it. I really wish I could because if you would have told me this when this all started, that we were going to have been underspent, I would have said, "Not possible." But again, I think that there is mediation programs now with the court. Now, right now with the court, we have New Hampshire Legal Assistance present, and we also have a CAP representative that can actually process these applications much more quicker. So I think that it's to be determined. We never know what we're going to see in our office. Sometimes we'll have it, and we'll have everybody coming in at once. And then sometimes we have other days that we don't know what we're going to be able to face. So it's always a surprise sometimes in our office what's going to be, what's going to happen.
Counselor Sockets.
Thanks. Going back to folks who have the voucher, who are having a hard time finding affordable housing in Concord, what are some of the options or strategies that might be available to us? Like, I know one of the limitations is that you have to be within a certain radius of the city to be able to use those city funds. Is there something that can be done to expand that radius or other avenues to make sure that folks who, you know, are getting the assistance they need but actually can't apply it towards the housing they need have other options?
Well, I think it would depend on the organization that's giving that to them. So if it's from Concord Housing Authority, that all depends. If it's a Section 8 voucher, you have a limited time that you would have to kind of stay in this community for a year and then be able to take your voucher and move to another community. So I really think it's really based not on us on a local level, but really more on a federal level of what they can do. When we're looking at the vouchers that they're giving them, it's not really meeting the need. So if I have a voucher in, let's say, for example, it's for a two-bedroom, but it's, my voucher's for $1,200, but in the market right now is actually $1,500. Therefore, where am I going to be able to find an apartment that's going to be within that? But that's a federal level. That's not at a local that we can be able to really address that issue.
Follow. Is that something that maybe the City Council could weigh in on formally with our delegation? Because I've seen this particular problem in a lot of the community threads, for example. And I would, I'd love to hear whether that's something you hear in your office a lot as well.
Any help would be beneficial to our community members. But I think it's just at a federal level, we really have to increase the vouchers in the amount to really meet the fair market value that we have now because it's just not going to meet the standard. So now we have the money. So right now, we have a lot of people that there's, the money is not an issue. It's really finding the place for a person to go that's the problem. And we've seen a lot of our landlords actually have increased also the rents on a lot of our folks. We've seen a lot, where we've seen the rent increase by $500. Where our folks are going to be able to go now with that, so. And now they've been evicted, so that's another issue that we've also seen in our office. And so we made a lot of referrals to New Hampshire Legal Assistance in those cases.
Follow. So besides increasing the quantity of affordable housing in Concord, would you place that as one of your top priorities for helping reduce this problem? Or what are some of the other priorities you would have?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, housing is key. And I think that that's something, I think that's, I've been here close to five years, actually, and it's the housing part. I've said that multiple times. It's the housing part that we've seen as the biggest issue that we see. Our biggest cost center in our office is rental. The majority of the expenditures that we have is always rental and always has been like that for a very long time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I know that your office also provides... You have pantry and provides a lot of goods for folks, moms, dads, children, et cetera. I don't think a lot of people know about that. I was wondering if you could just kind of talk a little bit about what you do over there?
So we do have a food pantry on site, which is really nice because we can be able to attend to our families right away. And we're able to, we also have our own holiday program that we do. And we do Christmas for our, we adopt families because we partner with different agencies in the community. So we will get the names of the children, and then we communicate with others in the community, and then they sponsor some of our children. Sunel has been one of our greatest supporters, given us turkey baskets. They're going to give us about 50 turkey baskets for some of our families. That's some of the things that we also organize. That is not something that's so much welfare-related, but it's actually something really nice that we do. And Jackie comes back every year. Jackie Watmore was a previous director. So she comes with her husband, and she volunteers on that day, and we are able to give out turkey baskets to some of our families, which is a really nice thing that we're able to do. And it's the donation that we can keep our food pantry pleat. It's by Capital Region Food Program. And they've been great. So they've been able to keep our food pantry, and it's really a great ability to be able to say, "We've had children that are hungry in our office, and we can be able to give them some snacks right there and give our families." One of the things that I've been able to do, I go also to the Dollar Store, and I pick up items for our families. And one of the things that I've been able to do, and I've been here for quite some time, is can openers. We forget about can openers. And when a family is homeless, you need a can opener to be able to open them. So one of those things that I've adopted, too, I've been able to bring on and be able to have them, make sure that we have that. And jelly. I always get peanut butter, but I can never get jelly. So that's not a thing that I always make sure that we have jelly with them. And bread. It's the basics that we sometimes don't remember that we have, but bread is needed. And we went through a time period where we were not getting any meats because of the pandemic. So that's something that we lost. So if anybody has any extras, want to come to our office and do any donations, that would be great.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the update. I think we all do, and keep up the great work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no new or unfinished business, but do we have any comments by counselors? Anything anybody wants to share? Mr. Manager, do you have anything? I'm sorry, Counselor Pierce.
I would just remind that before our next council meeting will be the time to vote and like to get everyone out there and vote. And in Ward Two, it's the barn at Bull Meadow at 63 Bog Road again this year. And our city clerk has worked out all the options and all the things needed to make it a smooth transition, smooth vote. And I hope to see everyone there in Ward Two.
Anyone else? Since you brought that up, I think it's probably appropriate then. In the consent agenda, you notice that we have a redistricting committee and follow the same model that Mayor Veronel set, that I set last time. And it's pretty much, if you go back, you'll see the same kind of model of different types of people. And try to make sure everybody was covered between the school district, legislature, the... You get the idea. And we are going to have to move quickly because the legislature, the House, has set a deadline of November 19th, I believe it is, or 17th to 19th, when they have to have all the retained bills or re-refere bills out of their respective bodies, or out of the House, that is, sorry, out of the committees. So we want to have our plan to them right after we have our public hearing in November. So it will be a fairly short challenge to do this. It is, the big math problem is really what it is because there are census blocks. You can't break up the census block. And so the goal is to not only create equity within the districts or the wards, plus or minus 5%, but we want to make sure we have polling locations within each one. They're accessible. accessible, et cetera. So there are those things that we'll have to look at to make sure everybody can have access to voting and such. And so I anticipate that it'll be at least three meetings, and I would encourage everyone who is interested to obviously come and to share their thoughts. But we'll have a public hearing next month, and the public will be able to weigh in, and everybody will get a vote. So if anybody has questions, please feel free to ask, but we'll probably move pretty quickly. Counselor Ricehawkins.
Thank you. Do you have those subcommittee dates set already?
No, because I just got appointed tonight, so I didn't think it would be fair to appoint